Some of them can be pretty interesting.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's kind of interesting, you know?
Yeah.
Especially when you're looking at a needs to appropriate to go back.
Oh, yeah.
Well, the atomic clock on the wall says it's six o'clock, so I will call this meeting into order. You'll have to bear with me. I'm not used to this rule, but we'll try to muddle through as best we can. So, call the order of this meeting, apply to the zoning commission on Tuesday, August 28th, 2018. I would like to add a change to the agenda, to add item three relative to a change in our meeting date. I think it's a foregone conclusion. We don't have a whole lot to discuss, but I would like to at least take a vote on it to make it official. Any comments on the agenda and the change?
Don't you have to declare a forum? Don't you have to declare a quorum?
Good point. There is a quorum, so we are official tonight by the skin of our teeth, so we have an official meeting. What's your position on the agenda?
Yes, I second. Well, I'll make the motion that we include that item on the agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Raise your right hand. Go ahead. All business, minutes from the last meeting. I guess you've all had a chance to review those. Any comments?
Yeah. Let me see. On the minutes' adoption of the June 26th meeting, you'll say it says approved unanimously, but it doesn't ever mention my name as a voter. And I think I was here, so, okay. Thank you.
Good point. I missed that. Is that the only point, Tom?
Yeah, that was the only thing I had.
Okay. And then what? What's your position on the agenda regarding the?
With that one small change, I move we accept and approve the minutes from the meeting of January, I mean, July 31st.
I second it. Been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes as presented with the one change. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Okay. No business, rezoning request. Lenys?
Good evening. Lenys Lyons, planning and zoning specialist for the city of Villarica. Tonight, we are hearing two requests that can go concurrently. One is a rezoning request, the other is a future land use amendment. This was deferred for 30 days per you guys' vote last month to obtain some clarity on a few questions that were posed by the commission. So, if you, you know, be a pleasure, we can do the same thing as far as taking both motions, both cases at the same time since they go with one another. But the first is RA0418, First Baptist Church of Villarica, Georgia, request rezoning. And I should have changed it on the agenda to reflect that the zoning request is for Villarica First Baptist instead of Micah Hammer because he is the agent acting on behalf of the church. But request rezoning for property located at North Van Wert Road and a portion of 1483 Highway 78, Villarica, Georgia. Partial number is V020070477 and V020070362. And land lot 165 of the sixth district in Carroll County currently zoned rural development to general commercial. And the future land use amendment is for property, for the same property currently commercial and public institution to go to commercial. Property consists of 6.0 plus or minus acres and is located in Ward 3. Since the last meeting, we had an opportunity to, city staff, the church, and the mayor had an opportunity to meet with the proposed developer, Mr. Don Lawson. And per a memo that has, that should have been, that should have been in your staff, staff packet, your P&amp;Z packet, there's a memo that was composed by the city attorney, David Mecklen, to kind of address what happened at the meeting. But specifically in regards to the case, staff analysis hasn't changed, staff recommendation hasn't changed. We recommend approval for the future land use amendment and recommending approval with conditions for the rezoning. With the conditions, one, permitted uses limited, be limited to the hospital, health, and medical institutions. Two, all improvements to be installed on property prior to occupancy. And three, it is encouraged that a preservation plan of action for the hearth house be submitted by the developer and approved by the city of Villarica prior to the issuance of any building permits. Because it was deferred by a planning commission decision, we did re-advertise, re-advertise the case in The Times Georgian, and we did resend cert by certified mail to surrounding property owners, notification of this public hearing.
Have you gotten any feedback from any of the neighbors?
No. Not as of this evening. We hadn't received any emails, phone calls, or correspondence in regards.
Question, Lenys. What does your second approval with conditions being all improvements to be installed on the property prior to occupancy? What does that mean?
That means whatever is required by development regulations and zoning ordinance, that those all be installed prior to occupancy. So, before they issue a certificate of occupancy to open, that means all your landscaping needs to be in place, all your ingress and egress, everything that is on your approved site plan and building plans that you've applied for building permits needs to be installed prior to us issuing a certificate of occupancy, which is kind of the last step in the building process.
So, it does include development requirements?
Indeed, yes.
As been at the moment?
Yes, development regulation, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Any questions of staff?
No.
I believe the applicant is a representative for the churches here tonight to speak on behalf of the application.
Good.
Hello again.
Hello.
Again, my name is Micah Hammer. I live at 2468 Rainey Road in Temple, and I serve as executive pastor at First Baptist. I also have Gary Thomas here tonight who can help me fill any questions you may have or if I missed something. As she mentioned, we did meet with the developer. He came to town, and we were very impressed. One of the issues with the hearth house that we had talked internally, we hoped that wasn't a deal breaker for him. So, we were a little nervous when we got off the topic up, and Gary's actually the one that broached the subject with him, and it completely turned our meeting when Gary mentioned hearth house in a very positive way. Not only is Mr. Lawson want to incorporate the hearth house into his project, he's ecstatic about it. He loves doing these kind of projects. He's doing them around the country as we speak. So, sitting in the city manager's office that day, he was asked a question if he'd be willing to put in writing what his thoughts were about the hearth house. And I have copies of his letter and a new draft site plan that shows the house has been relocated on that property that he will incorporate it into his project. So, let me give these to you, and we'll talk about it a little bit.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
If you want to take the time to read it, feel free. Let me summarize it. Basically, what he says is he's excited to have a house. He wants to move it up. He has asked for our verbal permission to now put a driveway onto our existing driveway, as you can see on the map there. I'm not sure if you have the old drawing with you, but that driveway on the south side was not there previously. So, what he would want to do with this house is move it on the opposite side of the property. Want to completely restore the outside of it back to as best he can to the original look. On the inside, he wants to remodel it, take out, potentially take out some interior walls to make meeting space. Now, he would offer that meeting space, of course, to his residents, to us, Rotary Club, Civitan Clubs, city council meeting, Boy Scouts, he named all the above. He would like to make this a part of the community. I think his last paragraph says it all. Our development group has extensive experience in the renovation and repurposing of older historical structures and would be grateful to be the next stewards of this important part of the history of Villarica. He even mentioned that if he took walls out of the interior of the house, he would plan to somehow incorporate those inside the new facility, telling the history of the hearth house. He even talked on about the residents of his facility could be the tour guides, if you will, to tell the history as guests and visitors come in to see the house. So, from our perspective, and Gary, please chime in if you have more to add, from our perspective, this couldn't have gone any better from the developer's side than ours. And we're, I'm not going to speak for the mayor and the city. I think they had the same feeling at that meeting as I think you'll see in Mr. Mecklen's memo. It's a very positive meeting, and I do believe he's a man of his word. He's now put it in writing that he actually wants to turn what we thought might be a problem into the center point of his community.
That's quite a move for the house, pretty much all the way across the property. I assume he's looked at that and is satisfied that it can be moved and relocated? You know, it's pretty shaky.
In his mind, this is a very, this is not even an issue. He's done so many of these at much larger scale and much older buildings. To him, it's, I think it's going to be a fun project. Gary?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. He mentioned, he's originally from the Virginia area and West Virginia, and he's done some 1600s, 1500s. And I think the level where he's at in his development firm and his architectural firm now, he doesn't do a lot of get into the weeds, and I think he wants to get into weeds on this one. I really sensed that in our conversation, that this will be his project.
He actually jokingly said, we said something about when you get started, we need to give you some office space. He said, "I'm going to put my office in that white house right there."
The house where it was originally located has been moved already farther.
Yes. It'll actually be a few hundred feet closer.
Back to where it originally was, yeah. Okay.
Any discussions about the conditions of the property, the wetlands?
He's not concerned from a standpoint, he knows he'll have to meet all requirements and all regulations and guidelines. He's not concerned about it. I can't give you his exact thoughts, but it was a no issue, non-issue for him.
And he's satisfied with water and sewer access?
I'm not sure how deep he's gotten into that. At the end of the day, he's aware, he made statements to us multiple times, that he understands he'll, whatever the city requires, he'll have to meet those. And I believe he said that in our meeting. He knows he has to meet all requirements set forth by the city and state.
Good.
So, we would be looking under the potential environmental impacts of authorized users, how we mitigate that? I guess that's letter I of the review criteria for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I mean, one thing I would add, gentlemen, is that it's important to remember that the city council is going to have to consider the review criteria that's laid out in 2.03 B for the UDC. So, you know, as we throw these questions at some of the applicants, it's to remember, it's important to remember the factors that the UDC throws out there to make, to try and answer those questions in accordance with the criteria spelled out in the UDC. And I think the application from Lenys, that Lenys, the city staff provider force actually analyzes the zoning requirement in accordance with those factors that are spelled out in the Uniform Development Code. Letters, it's eight factors, and that's letters A through I.
Thank you. Yeah, I was mostly concerned about the new development requirements, and we meet those, which pretty much spells out, you know, the distances and conditions and so forth. And it, I love that's included as part of the, and he understands that, so. Any other questions for? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Quite a change. Sam, do we have to have a public comment? At this time, anybody would like to come forward and speak for or against this proposal?
Jeffries, 120 Harold Rose, Villarica, Georgia. I just want to add to Micah's comments, since I was in the room with the developer that day, that I think that the term that I used relative to the hearth house, since it's already been mentioned, was that I had to pick my jaw up off the floor. This group of gentlemen that came from the church knew what I didn't know, and they'd already met with the developer, and they all came in with stoic faces and no smiles on their face, and I, you know, expected the worst as far as the hearth house was concerned. And quite the contrary, that's not what happened at all. And the exact quote that the developer gave us was, "You haven't given me a challenge, you've given me a Christmas present." So, I would just like to add that, and I'll make that comment on Tuesday night. Again, it's not appropriate to the zoning issue, but I do think it's important to know that the developer has, in my opinion, gone above and beyond what I expected anyway to come out of that meeting, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? At this time, then we will close the public hearing. What is the commission's position?
I would move that we accept and approve this application for rezoning contingent on the conditions that are contained in staff's memo, and approve it as submitted.
Is there a second? I second. Been moved and seconded that we approve the rezoning request. That includes both of those requests, as we originally stated. All in favor, as you write it? Unanimous? Thank you very much for your listening to us for last week or last month and this month. Appreciate the time and effort, and hope this all works out. Now, you're aware that, again, you have to do this all over again at the council meeting on the, I guess it's next Tuesday. What's the date? The fourth? Fourth? Okay. Very good. Okay. The next item then is our meeting change discussion.
All right. So, this item was added at the beginning of the meeting regarding the new meeting date. As you all are aware, we are coming to the end of getting our budget approved by council, and a part of that is to, is for our city council to go to two meeting dates a month, which in effect moves the meeting dates for Planning Commission and Historic Preservation Commission. It's proposed that city council will go on the second and the fourth, and staff and all recommended that we stay in line with the Tuesday date, as those were days that were already, the space has been occupied by, by the HBC and Planning Commission and other, and the city council. So, the Historic Preservation Commission met before you guys, and they voted to have their meeting on the third, Tuesday, which leaves you guys with the first Tuesday of the month. So, that's how we got to this option, so to speak.
Okay. Any discussion among the commission?
So, we will, my understanding is we will meet the end of September, and we'll turn around and meet immediately the first Tuesday in October. And you guys are ready to take care of any coordination that might be necessary depending on the dates that the applications are submitted and?
Right. We are restructuring the deadline dates, legal ad dates, and all correspondence that is affected by that change. So, because you guys are moving to move forward, well, we'll take a week forward, we just move all those dates up.
Yeah.
So, it may turn out that you have a case next month, and in the following month, you don't, and then you all can decide as to whether or not you want to continue and have that meeting, or you want to postpone, or cancel that meeting until the following month. But we will stay, you know, in communications about any cases or anything relevant to your body to, before the meeting, well, prior to the meeting.
Okay. Any other comments by the commission?
No.
I really would like to have a vote on this to make a full, make a motion.
So, move it.
A second.
All in favor of moving our P&amp;Z meetings starting in October to the first Tuesday, starting at six o'clock?
Let me ask one question. The council is moving their meetings to the first and third, second and fourth.
Yes, sir.
So, if we meet on the first Tuesday, then we'll never conflict, we'll always, okay. All right, just making sure.
All in favor of change?
Approved.
Thank you, Lenys.
All right.
Other staff comments?
Okay. So, first, our monthly planning and zoning report. Also on the agenda for city council to consider is the transmittal of the comprehensive plan to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. So, most of the documents have been uploaded, the bulky parts are on the website for review. What happened, what is about to happen now is that the mayor has to sign a letter to transmit the community work program, the future development map, and goals and strategies, and the text of the comprehensive plan update to the Department of Community Affairs for their 60-day, I believe it's a 60-day review period. Technically, usually doesn't take that long, but during that review time, we will still be able to accept comments, and still be under review by you all. And so, what happens after we get that back from them, it'll come back to you guys for a vote, and then go to, go to city council for final approval and adoption. So, once, what we're going to transmit to DCA, we'll update the website if any of that has changed. What happens in this review time is that we can make minor changes, but we can't make, if we make substantive changes, that just stretches out the review time process. So, that's about to happen.
Did you say that is available online?
Yes. So, we've created a tab under community development for comprehensive plan update, and there you'll find the maps, you'll find goals and strategies, and you'll find a lot of the text that came about through the public engagement process. So, everything that, from the charrettes, from the steering committee, from the open house, and other workshops in between, the consultants has taken, has taken all that back, analyzed it, and come up with some new strategies, goals, and objectives for the city. And that's going to be included in our comp plan. These are going to be broad strategies, broad ideas, and it does include an implementations portion. So, that helps guide us after it's been approved and adopted, helps us guide to see what do we attack first, what's our low-hanger, what is long-term for us, what's short-term for us, and includes some recommendations on how to do the implementation, like what avenues to seek out if we, if it's not all coming out of our capital fund, where do we get the money, or, you know, what other things should we pursue in the meantime. Some of our goals and objectives are related to things that staff will have to do. So, it's been a, I think it went a great process. I think we had a lot of public engagement, and people were very involved and were very concerned about what's going to happen to their city. And I think we have a solid roadmap to move us forward, at least for the next five years, because we'll do it all over again in five years.
Do you know, was there a presentation made to the DDA?
Beyond doing, the DDA, they don't do the rise and shine. I know they presented to the rise and shine meeting people. But there are members of the DDA that were on the steering committee, I think.
One.
Matt Mopson. He was on the steering committee, so, and at the last steering committee, I believe he took documents back from there to give to, to show to the DDA.
Might have been nice for them to have seen the plan that, what's his name, Ron?
Well, that's different. That's not, that one's not completed as of yet. This one is doing the whole city. So, there are parts in that new downtown plan, those are really, that's a real implementation plan. That's not broad-based, that is a very specific plan. So, that is, that's coming next, but that's not, that's not officially really part of the comp plan. It'll be included in it once it's completed, but as of now, it's not ready.
Okay.
All right. And then, lastly, we talked about, we sent out an email to you all about planning and zoning training. Places worked really hard to secure, we did our budget for it and guided so that we have secured rooms, or at least blocked off rooms, if you all are interested in attending. It'll be a one-day workshop, a training course, and you'll be reimbursed for, you'll be issued a per diem and a travel, travel prior to, we just need to know if you guys are interested in going. I'll also be attending to get myself, you know, up to speed on some of the new developments in planning and zoning. But I think it's a great opportunity. Tom and Bobby have reviewed some of the information, and I think it, you know, anything we can do to help make sure that we have an educated and knowledgeable commission, we look forward to opportunities to give you guys a chance, so.
Did you get feedback from members?
No, not, I've gotten some emails back and forth, but no one's confirmed whether or not they're interested in going. I thought maybe you guys were waiting to, for us to discuss it at the hearing tonight to maybe consider it some more. Like I said, I'll pass along more information as I get it. I reached out to the coordinator of the event, and he responded and let me know. He didn't have any more information, but it's, it's being put on by the Georgia Planning Association. I'm a member of that, that's part of, that's the state chapter of the National Planning Association. But they are discussing the final session at this point, but no, no really any updates on any other substantial details I can give you at this time.
Well, I know Mr. Flowers and I have expressed interest in further information and detail. Larry, what, are you interested in asking?
Yeah, I'm playing or going.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Well, you guys just let us know, and we'll get everything straight away for it, so.
Well, let me see, I've got, I'll offer to go. I expect to go myself, depending on a couple of personal items, but I'm going to say I'm going to go. And I've got a good-sized SUV, I can carry four people, myself and three others, so if y'all want to all ride together.
The other thing is, the plan is that you will go down the night before, an attending session, check out.
Come back that afternoon, yeah.
Okay. Good. Okay. Anything else from staff?
That's all from me.
Okay.
Wait a minute. Mr. Barber?
State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Hey, I'm Tom Barber. I live at 801 North Hickory Level. I think, I think it's important for the staff and the commissions, the boards, authorities that serve to, during this next year, have more interaction, one between the staff and the commission, and probably between the boards and the elected officials. So, the mayor and I have started attending some of these meetings. You've noticed, we've been here the last couple, we went to DDA the other day. So, one of the things that I have said in some meetings- So one of the things that I have said in some meetings, but not a lot, concerns this whole idea about what Ron is doing. And I'm, I'm sure it's confusing, because I'm, I'm figuring it out as I go, but when I got here, what we had done was the RSVP. So that was, that was completed, and we needed to do the comp plan. So the comp plan is, is a state mandated document, but it's similar to the RSVP in that it's pretty high-level. And so we started working on that, and then we got, you know, embarked on the walking trail plan with the PATH Foundation. And I was getting to know the staff and talking to the elected officials and people in the community, and what I gathered from that was, we had lots of really strong opinions about what to do specifically downtown. And so as I looked at what we were doing, and I talked with Chris, and I talked with the mayor, I talked to some business owners and whatever, is, is I got increasingly concerned about recommending anything to the council, because I didn't feel like we knew where we were headed. So then the train situation came up, right? So that was like December or something, when we had the bad, you know, the two-day blockage at Connors', and we started getting involved with, with the railroad, and getting a better idea of the scope of that problem, and then we, we started having increasing trouble with punkin town and truck traffic, and then I started looking at 61 and started trying to figure out a way to get 61 out of downtown. Then the whole North Loop thing blew up, and the funding got pulled, and, I mean, it's been an interesting year from, from the standpoint of all that transportation stuff in downtown. So at some point in there, it began to dawn on me that what we needed was to back up for a minute and have a plan that was more, as Lenise mentioned, more of an implementation plan than this high-level conceptual thing that we had been working on. And I felt like only one person needed to do it, that we didn't, we didn't need a firm necessarily to do it, and we just need six of them. And so we went to council, and we said, hey, you know, we've got AMEC already in here doing the comp plan, so let's get Ron, who works with them and is sort of overseeing the comp plan development, to try to take all these different pieces, the RSVP and the walking trail, and Chris's ideas, and the mayor's ideas, and Vicky's ideas, and my ideas, and Bobby's ideas, and what the railroad will let us do, and what G-, you know, all that stuff. Get all that and put it into one thing. Another reason that I like using Ron was, he has been working with Acworth for 20 years on their downtown. So this is not his first rodeo, and I felt like we needed that, I felt like I needed that. And so the council agreed, so we, so Ron started tinkering. And, and a lot of what he was doing was just trying to take the ideas, the conceptual ideas, and come up with something that would make sense out here. So as, as we, as we go forward now, I don't feel like we have a plan, an implementable plan. But I think still that we have an opportunity in downtown to do something that people from around the country would come to see because of just the bones of what's out here. There's, there's the potential for something cool, and I'm an accountant, so I'm not the guy to create that, right? But I think we can put something together that the business community and the residents, the staff, the elected officials, the boards will all get excited about, and when that happens, I think we'll, we'll be on to something. But we're not there yet. So then you throw in the Mirror Lake Connector, Peace Bloss, which came out of the blue, I didn't see that coming, and redevelopment powers. So what I had passed Ron with was really right here, right? So the Welcome Center to Olive Tree, that was sort, and mostly this side of the road, railroad. But now that we've gotten into it, I see that, that he, his scope needs to expand, and he needs to work up the connector. All right, then we got involved with Tanner talking about the walking trail, and that being the first mile. And I've been working on this road problem that we have, and then one of the things we need is another north-south piece, because we got industrial and we got punkin town, and you got 61 in the middle of North Avenue, sort of, but we could use another one in there. So I'm thinking, well, you know, walking trail and, and the connector, and maybe another piece. Tanner, we're trying to get Tanner interested in maybe some medical office development around their facility. So I'm thinking we're going to try to expand that way, right? So the tad could become a real big issue, a bit, you know, a bigger development than just the connector. It could extend toward the Welcome Center, and it could go up into the crack, all the way to Shoreline, and maybe up toward Tanner, you know what I'm saying? So, so that's as far as, as my vision has got, right? This may, it may, this may get worse as it goes, right, as I understand Villarica and see the opportunities and get, get a feel for what's going on. So one of the drawbacks to all this is we need to do land acquisition, which means we don't need to talk about this, which is a problem. So I want y'all to know that if you feel like you're sort of isolated and you're on an island, part of that is, I'm not, I don't know how to communicate this easily without blowing land prices so out of sight that we planned something that can't be done. So if you've got some wisdom about how I do that, I would appreciate you sharing that with me, because I've not said a lot about this in work session and council meetings, but y'all need to understand sort of the context in which you're trying to operate, because what we're trying to do, what I want to do here is something that we look back and go, man, that's great. Like, not just better, you know, not just okay, and so I want y'all to help me with that, because y'all have lived here. I've, I've been here a whole year, you know, and so I'm, I'm not sure how this is going to play, you know, how, I don't know how land acquisition is going to work, and where funding is going to come from, and I don't know if Peace Bloss is going to pass, if we're going to get redevelopment or not, and, you know, so we got, we have, have a lot of things fall in our favor. The economy's got to stay good, you know, for all this to happen. But I feel like we're getting close, you know, after a year, I feel like I'm a lot better situated to help us get to something that we just, that has some wow to it. And I think once we do that, this will be a lot more fun, because up to now, this hasn't been just like great fun for me, you know, because there's so much stuff that, that doesn't work together. You know, 61 being in our downtown, and the railroad is just, you know, beyond anything I've been able to figure out. But I think some other pieces of it could work, so it, I hope that helps give you some context of what the staff is doing. Bobby and Lenise and, and that group are, you know, they barely got here in time. They, they came late, '17, right as the housing market started to pick up again, and if they hadn't have gotten here when they did, I wouldn't have survived it without them. Pete has been working on water and sewer, as you've heard, y'all sat in council meetings, and you, you listened to, I'm sure, the, the post-council meeting recap, and, you know, so we're, we're trying to fix some long-term problems with water and sewer that we should have done 20 years ago when we started growing. We're working, you know, we're working hard, we, we're driving some, some vendors, and, and things are going to start changing, and as they do, I think y'all will have an opportunity to play a bigger and bigger role, because you may get to entertain some proposals downtown that are really significant, not just like a boutique hotel, but multifamily, some office...
Mixed use.
Relocate City Hall, a town square, actually do the Welcome Center, maybe figure out a way to get 61 out of downtown, you know, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, so that's my, my two cents worth for tonight.
Well, I've, I've watched Ron's plan develop, you know, through involvement with the comprehensive plan, and that really is impressive. I mean, it is exciting. So I hope that there's something that, and that's why I asked Lenise whether this had been presented to DDA. Now, one of the things that I gained invaluable knowledge from were those three trips that we took to the three similar kinds of cities. The thing that impressed me most of that was the cooperation and the working relations between their city councils and their DDAs. I don't see any of that.
Yep.
It may be happening, but I don't see, and that has got to occur if any of this, I think, is going to move forward. So the more you can do to, to, to make that happen, and in fact, I encouraged a statement to be made in the comprehensive plan to that effect. I don't know if it's there or not.
Well, I, I know that the mayor and I are committed to improving the relationships, so we'll just see how that plays, but I hear you. Yeah, there, we're disjointed, you know, the development authority, the DDA, the, you know, the Main Street group, this group, the historic preservation folks, I mean, there's not, you know, there's not been a meeting of the minds, I don't think, so, you know, we got to work on it.
Do we have too many?
No, I mean, they all have, they all have their role, we just, you know, we're new, the mayor's new, I'm new, I mean, it's, it's, it's a lot to digest.
Except, mayor knew what he was getting into. I think you and Mr. Elliott are to be commended for stepping into the breach and trying to take up the, the battle and, and solve some of these problems, so keep after it. We, we like what you're doing so far, and, or I do, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I, I think you guys are doing a great job, and I think it's part of that effort to engender a more professional approach by Villarica to some of the issues and problems we have, and, and it is discouraging to see the mess we have in some areas, which took decades to develop to where it is, and we're not going to cure that overnight. But if, you know, each day in every way, we chip out, chip away at it and try to make improvement each day, then we'll get there. So anyway, I commend you for your efforts, Mr. Barber, and I hope you continue.
Well, thank you for your comments, really, really appreciate them. Anybody else would like to come forward? If not, I'll close public comments and say nothing further on our agenda.
I will adjourn.
I second it.
All in favor of adjournment? Adjourned. 6:43.